Good evening, Board. Terry Casada, CIP manager. As was written to the record, this resolution concurs with the action that you took as council to approve the agreement with Able City for the development of architectural guidelines. And as a reminder, these are the guidelines that we expect will establish the character and the nature of the development, whether it's development that the city undertakes or development that private developers ideally will be undertaking shortly, so that, again, we have a unified character to the transit-oriented development. Because the funds have been loaned to the TIRZ, we require the board's concurrence with council action. So staff requests your approval of the site.
Move to approve. The motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion approved and a second. Are there any further questions from the board? Please poll the board members.
Miller?
Aye.
Eros?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Padilla?
Aye.
Cora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Be no further items. The meeting of the board members is adjourned. This meeting of the regular city council is now in session. We've already pledged allegiance. Next agenda, open forum. Is anyone in the council want to address the... Anyone in the audience want to address the council on the... On any of the agenda items?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabriela Carraga?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Please, the chairman.
Good evening, Mayor. It's not an important item, but I just actually I'm coming from county with Commissioner Hines' office just to inform you all that we're going to be having hosting free community cleanup events throughout the county, and I wanted you all to be informed. There's going to be one here in Horizon at El Rosario. There's different dates on the flyer that we do have, and there throughout the county in San Luis Obispo, Fabinz, East Montana, there's also on the west side, and we wanted to let everyone know. I need your permission, if you would, if you wouldn't mind me leaving some flyers here for everyone to have, just to let you all know.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Would anyone else from the audience like to address the council?
One question.
Okay.
You're going to take a few?
I can tell some more detail and consent agenda.
Is there... There's a motion approved. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Please poll the council.
Miller?
Aye.
Eros?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Cora?
Aye.
The motion approved.
Can we...
Yes, sir.
Can we revisit that? I wanted to pull an item. I'm sorry. Can we revisit that item? I would like to pull the CIP.
Okay.
Item number four.
What do we need to do to clarify this?
Move to reopen.
Is there a motion... A motion and a second to reopen? Last agenda item. Poll the council.
Miller?
Aye.
Eros?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Padilla?
Aye.
Cora?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is now open. Is there any... Do you want to pull the CIP?
Yeah.
Item number four.
Item number four.
We have to have a motion to that.
No, we have... If we reopen the item, we have to pull it back, but without item number four.
Council, I believe there's a little...
I need to stick to your...
So what we want to do is reconsider the consent agenda, and we want to have a discussion, I believe, on item four, and then I think there's a clarification needed on item six. So if, if, I think we have a motion to reconsider the consent agenda. I believe council already did that, and so now we'll move to item four.
Do we need to reapprove?
Yes.
The consent agenda without those two items?
Yes.
Okay, remove to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
This is your second hope.
Yes.
Also excuse Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Adams, number four, not our six. Poll the council.
Miller?
Aye.
Eros?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Padilla?
Aye.
Cora?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four, number six are on the regular agenda. The remaining consent agenda is approved.
Item number four.
Item number four.
So to item number four now, under the regular agenda. Item number four is discussion in action. This is on an update on the capital improvement program.
And I had a specific question on that. Unless somebody else needs to hear something?
I wanted to hear about Corky.
Okay. You always want to hear about Corky.
I'm surprised.
Would you like for me to skip to Corky or...
Will you be able to have the entire presentation?
Of course. That's up to council's discretion.
Sure.
All right. Good evening, Council. Terry Casada, CIP manager. We don't have a whole lot of changes on some of these projects, so I'll try to go through them as quickly as possible. But again, if there's any questions from council, I'm happy to address them. Oxbow and Pauline Streets, we still are working on... Working with the HR Mud. We expect that they will have their line installation on Pauline and Bro completed in April of 2022, and we still owe you an agreement, a revised agreement, for the city's design of Oxbow, Pauline, and Bro. Municipal facilities, phase one, we're continuing to work with USDA. We're updating our financial narrative and the CIP plan that the USDA is requiring that we submit. We expect to have that done here in the next week or so, and then we'll start working with on council and the rest of the steps that we have to take for that loan. And this is the rendering. Golden Eco Park, we continue working with a contractor. The pump was tested on Monday of this week, and there are some elements that are not working, which is not a surprise, but the electrician and a representative of Rainbird, who is the pump manufacturer, were onsite. We have a plan of action that they have made recommendations to both the contractor and the city. We'll meet with the contractor tomorrow to go over the timing of those. We are taking a rather conservative approach, and we want to make sure that that's the right step to take, so that's why we want to meet tomorrow. There is a lower cost that we can pursue, but then if that doesn't work, then we'll have to look at replacement of some of the larger components of the pump. So again, we're, we want to make sure that we're balancing time and cost.
I had a question on that, Terry Casada.
Yes, ma'am.
So the, the water service that you're proposing here for an additional, I guess, additional line, is that already...
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Do we already have an additional line for the water park when we install the tank? Or no?
No, there was no additional water. So this, right, and that was servicing both the existing park prior to the renovations and the new, the new elements. So this will split that out so that we can use the park, the, the two components of the water park simultaneously.
Okay. Thank you.
Corky Park, council may recall that I reported that we were having individuals that were riding with unauthorized vehicles into the park. So what we are looking at installing are spotters and gates to manage that entry. We still want to make sure that the city has access to the park for maintenance, and so that's where the gates will be, but the spotters will still allow, for example, individuals who use wheelchairs to get through parts of the park, but it won't allow ATVs to get into the park. So we're working with a contractor on a proposal for that. We expect to issue a work directive and then bring a change order to the council for that approval. We're also proposing a locking mechanism for the bathroom that's programmable so that we can shut access to the bathroom when the park is closed without having to utilize city staff to go out there. So we're pushing to get that done as quickly as possible. However, the delivery, as with just about any other construction project, continues to be an issue. So we don't have a great deal of confidence on when we can get this, but we're pushing to get this done in the next couple of months and have the park opened by May of this year. And I mentioned to the mayor that I didn't think it would be earlier than April, but I have double-checked, and, and it's going to be May before we can do that. We want to make sure that when we open the park, it's really ready for the public, because otherwise we're going to have issues with not having access to, to the bathroom or the bathroom being open when we really don't want it to be open.
Question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Other than the items mentioned, is there anything else pending for Corky, besides what you've mentioned? Bathrooms are finished, everything else is pretty much complete?
Yes, and I'm, I'm looking at, and Ms. Medina with Hewitt's Hall is there, our construction mentor, but is there anything that I...
Just one ADA issue. We have to move a bench, but other than that?
I'm not sure if everyone heard Ms. Medina, one ADA issue relocating a bench, but that's it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other than the items mentioned, is there anything else pending for Corky, besides what you've mentioned? Bathrooms are finished, everything else is pretty much complete?
Yes, and I'm, I'm looking at, and Ms. Medina with Hewitt's Hall is there, our construction mentor, but is there anything that I...
Just one ADA issue. We have to move a bench, but other than that?
I'm not sure if everyone heard Ms. Medina, one ADA issue relocating a bench, but that's it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Benton, right of way, again, something that we need to review a proposal and, and start design. We're going to miss the first calendar quarter, though we expect to have the, the design to you in, in April. We are looking at the regional park and potential property acquisition. We'll bring in the ADA transition plan. Design, again, this is something that we're planning to bring to council in April for contract. The street maintenance fund, striping on Darrington except for Crosswalk has been completed. Crack sealing is continuing, and the scheduled completion continues to be April of this year. Bro, as I mentioned, will be packaged with Oxbow and Pauline, but the funding source for Bro's improvements will come from the street maintenance fund. An update on federally and state-funded projects, we continue working with Tech Stop on North Darrington reconstruction, and we're working on the utility coordination and also on funding options for the gap between the current funding through the MPO and the project estimate.
Darrington is, as it extends outward up north, will become John Hayes, and we received a letter from the county today asking for comment on the continuation of John Hayes. How does John Hayes and its connectivity to Montana fit in with our TOD and reconstruction of Darrington? Can we expect that to be a, an additional circulator, or how should we view the, the continuation of, of Darrington all the way to Montana?
I, I think you hit on all the points, Alderman Miller. It does provide that connectivity to Montana, so it does provide another point of egress and ingress, certainly with the TOD and the plans that, that can only help, because it does provide another way for the traffic to circulate. This is also part of the 2018 regional...
RMS.
RMS Regional Mobility Strategy, which was approved at the MPO, and that the town was a participant in supporting it, just like Eastlake was part of, of that plan. So, I'm sorry, not Eastlake, Darrington. So this is just another phase, even though it's outside of the city limits, that provides that connectivity to the town and to the proposed improvements that the town is, is planning at the TOD.
There's also direct access to the Old Castle's regional park?
No.
Yes. Yes, it, it provides another point into, into the town as a whole.
Well, to me, it means that there's continually movement towards a second city, where we talked about originally with our circulator of the, of the bus service to Socorro and the Loop, and this is... This is continued reason not to have to go downtown.
Indeed, indeed, and, and this is part of what we saw again as, as a reinvestment from the county into the eastern part of the county. And again, it's, it's part of what connects the county where it was very clear that there wasn't adequate connectivity and, and streets were incomplete.
So the county in, in this letter is asking for letters of support. I would encourage all of them, including the mayor, to, to send a letter of support. I think it would be, I'm sure Terry would be happy to help us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
At what point does John Hayes...
Begin?
Begin.
Pelacano?
So it's still Berryville or Darrington? I know Berryville is, is dropping off.
Are they continuing? Are they going to just call it Darrington, or is there going to be Berryville?
Darrington.
It's called Darrington.
So it's been longer Berryville.
And so John Hayes is from Benny Valentine Motla Drive is what the, the request calls for.
So Berryville has been dropped, and now it's just Darrington all the way straight.
Yeah, that's the name.
Darrington all the way to Pelacano.
Okay.
So this is only to, not with, not always to, not quite to... But John Hayes has already been developed.
Correct.
From...
Well, it's interesting. They're calling it volume one and volume two, which, from Benny Valentine Drive to Motla Drive, and there are two, there are two text file project numbers for it.
So this will be the, and that's what we lack so much in Horizon City is north-south access. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. On the city's Darrington reconstruction, you, you'll see that you have a couple of items on today's agenda that actually help to support this, and that's the renewal of the agreements for appraisal services. We expect that we'll be using some of this, but we will have to bring them back to council to make sure that we've got the federal provisions in there. So this first step is to extend the agreements, but then we'll, we'll bring them back after we consult with, with the appraisals, appraisers, so that we can add the federal requirements that the town is bound to include with all of its contractors and consultants whenever we're using federal funds, and we're expecting to use federal funds. Safety projects funded by Tech Stop, South Darrington Safety Lighting and North Canals of Safety Lighting. We're continuing to coordinate with, with Tech Stops on that. The design will continue so that the projects are awarded when they are scheduled, in the fiscal years that they are scheduled, but we have been advised that there will be long lead times because of getting all of the materials, the light, lighting fixtures. The TOD updates, as council acted as TIRZ board, those have been approved or concurred with, and we have begun meeting with the consultant Able City. We expect that they will be in town the week of March 28th for a site visit and also for the first open house. As we finalize those, those details, we'll let the, the council know, so that you can also let your constituents know that there will be an open house for, for the TOD architectural guidelines. There is another item on council's agenda that's slightly different from the item that you saw as a TIRZ board that supports the RACE grant. It adds a lot more responsibility because the town is the sponsoring entity, so it reads slightly differently from, from the support that you acted upon as a TIRZ board. And again, we will take this show on the road and ask for our partners to support the, the grant application. And subject to your questions, that's my CIP report. Thank you, council.
There's a motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. Please poll the council.
Miller?
Aye.
Eros?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Padilla?
Aye.
Cora?
Item number four is approved. Item number six...
Item number six, discussion in action. This is on a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a fourth amendment to the agreement for on-call appraisal services with Wilkinson, Pendergrass, and Beard LP to extend the term for an additional two years until March 31st, 2024, and to add verification and representation provisions.
Mayor and council may I speak to that item. While we were moving forward with this extension, we found out that there was a name change with this firm. It's actually the same firm, but what I would like to ask council's permission to do is amend the resolution so that this agreement will be with Wilkinson, Pendergrass, and Associates LP, formerly known as Wilkinson, Pendergrass, and Beard LP. It's the same firm. They just, we found that they filed a, a name change with the Secretary of State, so we want to make sure our records coincides.
Move on.
Correct.
There's a motion approved and a second. Please poll the council.
Miller?
Aye.
Eros?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Padilla?
Aye.
Cora?
Item number six is amended.
We're going to do item number four?
Let's put out a consent. Put out a consent.
We have to approve that.
Four answers. We're polled.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Hey, don't think you can.
County on the regular agenda.
Item number nine, discussion in action, and this is on a resolution that the town of Horizon City, Texas, supports. The application submitted to the U.S. Economic Development Administration, bill-back letter of reasons challenged by the University of Texas and El Paso Aerospace Center on behalf of the West Texas Aerospace and Defense Manufacturing Coalition, authorizing the mayor to send a letter of support for the application.
Yes. Good evening, council. Mayor Eddie Garcia with Economic Development. So the next item on the agenda is a request to provide UTEP with a second letter of support so that they can submit for the second phase of their grant to the Economic Development Administration. As you recall, I did come back, I did come before you on October 12th of last year, and I did request that first letter so that UTEP could submit for that first phase of the EDA grant. It, it's a two-phase grant that they're submitting for. And so really, you know, what we're trying to do here for the town of Horizon City is really try to get these high-tech, high-paying jobs that, that come to, to the area. But our effort really is with, in conjunction with UTEP and our other partners that we're working with, it's, it's a coalition essentially, is to, is to develop an infrastructure for aerospace, right? Can't tell you that, you know, we're working with the city of El Paso, we're working with Bangor, we're working with Fabinz, the county of El Paso. It's just a really large coalition of individuals, right? And so we want to be a part of that here in Horizon City. Just to give you a little bit more background, UTEP did submit that first phase of application, it was like 529 applicants initially, and they were, they were selected to the second phase. So they're one of 50 coalitions that's moving forward. And essentially what they're doing is they're competing for $100 million, right? They're, that's the grant that they're submitting for. So what they've asked us to do is to provide office space here in Horizon City to incubate those aerospace companies, companies that are starting off to have that high-tech, high-paying job coming to your, here to Horizon City. But what they've asked us to do also is to get that office space, but participate at 20% while they participated 8% for the cost of office space. So what we're looking at is our office space where we currently reside, the Horizon EDC, and then in a budding suite, right, for a total of 3,600 square feet. So again, it's going to be a five-year term that we're going to be seeking with the landlord in that particular space, if we can acquire it. And again, that is, again, to, to help us get that grant. That's the grant that they're going to be submitting, and that's how we're going to be participating with, with UTEP and, and the rest of our partners in this coalition. I can't tell you that the other thing that they've asked us to do is to make sure, you know, that if possible, when, where possible, that we continue to find permanent office space if, if this is a, a success with, with the different companies they incubate, that we incubate here. So we'll be doing that. But what's beneficial to us in, in the, in Horizon EDC with the Economic Development Corporation is that they're going to cover 80% of our expenses, which is really going to reduce the amount that we're going to expand for the next five years, right? So we're, we're going to see a savings of about $40,000 to $50,000 per year, but the plan is to reinvest those dollars to find that permanent space as part of this, right, the permanent office space for, for these companies. And so again, we request that city council does support, again, UTEP with this application so to see if they're successful in acquiring this $100 million grant so that we can try to locate companies here in the town of Horizon City. Answer any questions?
Is there, Mr. Garcia, thank you, great presentation. Is it for five years? What happens if they find a property around here that's maybe more sufficient than the one in 287 something?
Right, and so that's a, that's a really good question. So I, I think one of the next steps for us if they do get this grant is I'll work with legal to, you know, memorialize the agreement, right, where we won't have that situation. We ensure that we're not holding on to office space, that, you know, UTEP continues to have skin in the game at 80%. So, I mean, this is just the beginning part of it. I mean, I think at some point we're going to need to memorialize what it is that we're doing and how we're going to move forward if they're successful getting that $100 million grant. But I mean, at the end of the day, really, for us, you know, we're not going to, we're, we're not going to wait around for the five-year term to, you know, as an EDC, we're going to go out there and try to find that space, right? Especially if we start to see in the first couple of years that it's, it's successful. So, you know, in year three, we're looking at finding, you know, land, finding office space, finding potentially another grant to, to get a building set up, right? Because we know that our term is going to end up, and we're going to need to find that permanent office space here in the town of Horizon City.
And the perfect tenant might be...
Sure. That's why I want it being held to the five years.
Right, yeah, yeah, no, yeah, definitely, but look, at the end of the day, typically what we see out here is 18 to 24 a month, you know, turnaround time to build something. So here, year three, we're really, you know, gunning towards, towards finding permanent office space. If it's, I mean, if the program is, is successful.
Sure.
I, I think it's a great opportunity for Horizon City.
It really is, you know, we're putting, putting ourselves on the map, sir.
Start from the floor up, and then we'll turn down.
Sure.
There's a motion approved and a second. If there are no further questions, please poll the council.
Miller?
Aye.
Eros?
Aye.
Venteria?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Padilla?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, on a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between the town of Horizon City, Texas and El Paso Centennial Lions Club Incorporated for the Christmas tree lighting ceremony on December 2nd, 2022, and the Christmas tree parade, not Christmas, Christmas parade. And under the terms of the agreement, the city council finds that the commotion and conducting of these events will provide cultural and recreational activities for the residents and visitors of the city, and the city is willing to extend the funds to pay for the costs of the time of the city staff and police, traffic control assistance and cleanup costs for the events.
Good evening, mayor and council, Michelle Garcia, planning director. At the last council meeting, the council approved for a draft agreement to be established between the city and the Centennial Lions Club for this year's Christmas parade. And so the term, sorry, I need something back there. The term covers just this year's events, which will occur on December 2nd and 3rd. Using last year's numbers, we anticipate about 28 staff, city staff to be present, and about 24 vehicles to be used to help with traffic control and things of that nature. And then also about $1,600 for traffic control devices and cleanup after the event, and a little under $4,000 for overtime pay. That's an estimate, so we hope to, to keep to those numbers. Again, these are in-kind services for this event that most of our community looks forward to. And so we ask that the city council approve this agreement.
Is a motion approved, is there a second? And a second?
After no further questions, please.
It's just going so much, just the comments, it's going so much, and with the parade, it's, it's just booming. Maybe doing us on the map.
Call the council, please.
Mayor?
Aye.
Franchi?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Aye.
I can see the whole reef of John Hayes all the way.
Nobody will want that.
Items number 11 and 12 will be taken together and with separate motions. Item number 11, on a final plat application for Horizon Crossing Unit 3, SUV 002493-02022, legally described as being a portion of CD Stewart survey, number 321, Town of Horizon City, El Paso County, Texas, containing 19.469 plus or minus acres applications submitted by Conde Incorporated. And number 12, on a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a developer's participation agreement between the town of Horizon City, Camino Real Investment Properties LLC and Rancho Real 15 LLC for the construction and maintenance of a larger ponding area in the town where Horizon City towns and our unit 4 subdivision.
Mayor and council, Michelle Garcia, planning director, this is the final plat for Horizon Crossing Unit 3. It's a commercial subdivision. This is how the zoning map looked before the rezoning was approved for this area. It has to be updated, but this was the zoning plan that was submitted. And so the area in question is here on the zoning map. And the area, the, of the ponding area is roughly in this section here. This is the aerial, the location map, and the final plat. This is in zoomed in so you can get a better idea of how the lots are, are being laid out. They will have access off of a 50-foot private driveway utility and drain adjustment. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this plat at their February 21st meeting with the condition that all staff comments be addressed, which they have, and that the proposed 50-foot driveway utility and drain adjustment be recorded prior to the recording of the plat so that it can be documented on the, the reported plat. In addition to that, I've mentioned when the preliminary plat came to council that the developers proposing to utilize a ponding area that will also serve the residential development to the south. Typically, the city will not accept a ponding area that serves a commercial site where it accepts more than 50% commercial water. In this case, it's accepting about 80% commercial water versus 20. And so item 12 is a developer participation agreement between the city and the developer to cover those additional maintenance costs that the city will incur for accepting that pond. It is estimated that the annual cost for maintenance is about $10,000. And we split it 80/20 between the city and the, and the developers. So the, that's $8,000 per year. And we agreed upon a 10-year term, and the developer agreed to provide a one-time lump sum payment of $80,000. So that will provide for 10 years' worth of maintenance and one large rehabilitation project, which usually happens at the 10-year mark. And so the city, city engineer, public works director and staff, our city attorney have all reviewed this and agreed with it, and we recommend approval of the agreement.
You can go for an inflation factor.
And, and again, because we see the, the benefit of having that commercial development and, you know, utilizing the most land for, for that development. I've been answering, any questions?
Small parcels, no big box store anyway.
Right. I, I believe they were trying to get a big box store, but assuming they couldn't make that work.
Okay, is there, there's a motion approved?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna take separate actions, so the first one is on the plat, the final plat.
Is there a motion approved, and a, is there a second?
For, for.
Item 11? Item 11?
Just to clarify, that is with that, that condition?
And my second? Mayor?
Aye.
Franchi?
Aye.
Franchi?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Item number 12.
Is there a motion approved, approved?
Seconds.
Is there a motion approved, and a second? Call the council, please.
Mayor?
Aye.
Franchi?
Aye.
Franchi?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 13, this is on a resolution that the town of Horizon City, city council supports the submission of a planning RACE grant for $1,735,000 to fund the planning and design of the Horizon Transit Oriental Development infrastructure to include roadway and utility improvements on Dilly and Delay Road and the Horizon Transit Plaza, and that the, and that they establish Horizon City as the project sponsor responsible for the local match and acknowledging the RACE grant funding requirements.
Good evening, council, Terry Casada, CIP manager. This resolution authorizes staff to submit a grant application for the current notice of funding opportunity. As I mentioned earlier, this does have greater provisions because the city would be the, the grant sponsor. And so that is one of the acknowledgements that the resolution indicates, that the Horizon City would serve as a public sponsoring lead project contact, that the city commits to fund the local cash match of 20% for the project, and also acknowledging that this grant is on a reimbursement basis, which means that the town would have to incur the costs and then request reimbursement. These funds are usually administered by the Texas Department of Transportation. So if successful, we would enter into an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation, bring that before council, and that would lay out more of the details of how the grant would be managed, how the funds would be managed, and who would have the specific responsibilities for the design of the project. Again, this is a very competitive project. In your backup, we included presentation that, you've seen this before. It's, it's the, the spine of the transit-oriented development that we hope will spur private development. So we want to make a very strong case that this would be transformational for the town for really a, a small investment when it's coming from the federal government, right? Less than $2 million. So staff is, is requesting your support and approval of this resolution.
Any idea when this might go to Congress or?
Yes, but I can't think of it right now, mayor. The last time, they were pretty fast, we submitted it in, in the summer, in June, and we knew before Thanksgiving, which was very difficult for me because I wanted to have a good Thanksgiving, and, and that was, but we knew it was a, a very competitive. So possibly within six months, they'll give us a notification. The due date is April 14th, so we should know by the fall whether or not we have a funding board.
Is there a motion on the floor? Please approve.
Second.
Is a motion approved, and a second? If there are no further questions, please hold the council.
Mayor?
Aye.
Aye.
Franchi?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Franchi?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 14, on change order number five, with construction contract with Allen Concrete LLC for Con, for Conriff, Orky Park Improvement Project Solicitation Number CIP 2018-102003, and authorizing the mayor to execute the documents.
Council, good evening, Terry Casada, CIP manager. Change order number five adds 13 calendar days to the time for substantial completion and 21 days for the time, to the time for final completion. And this accounts for the time that the contractor needed once the water meter was delivered. You may recall that there was a delay in, in getting that delivered, even though the, the contractor requested it early in, in November. It took about three weeks for, for the, the meter to get here because there was an emergency at one of the school campuses. And so a term had diverted the meter to one of the school campuses. After receiving the meter, the contractor had to, had to make some adjustments to hook up the, the restroom and completing the landscaping on the north side of the park. So this change order grants them the time for that because that was not something that they could control, and they could not identify the fittings until the meter was received on site. There is no additional cost for this change order. This is only change order for time. However, because it is more than seven working, seven calendar days or five workdays we're bringing into council, that's been the, the practice and, and the authority that council has granted us. So staff is recommending approval. Our construction manager has reviewed this as well as the design consultant, and they agree with, with the time requested by the contractor.
There's gonna be a change order number six, that's the completion date is the best.
Yes, sir, there will be a, a number six and maybe even a number seven. It depends on how quickly we can get all of the information for both the locking mechanism and, and the gates and ballards. And again, the, the element that is questionable is a delivery date, right? That's what, we expect a certain amount, but it isn't always what is expected.
Motion approved, second. Is the motion approved, and a second? Are there any further questions from the council? Call the council, please.
Mayor?
Aye.
Franchi?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Franchi?
Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Item number 15, this is on a proposal to consider the closure of City Hall and court administrative offices on December 7th, 2022.
This is, uh, to allow our, our staff and to enjoy time with their families during a slow period of the year. And, uh, I, um, yeah, just, just for that, to allow our staff to spend time with their families over the holidays. And I wish we could do the same for our police, but you know, they.
That's what we signed up for.
Right, but we appreciate our police officers, but, and.
I'd recommend we approve, motion approved.
Is a motion approved, is there a second? And a second? Call the council, please.
Mayor? Franchi?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Franchi?
You know, they take up for three weeks for the school district, so.
Some of us don't.
And the motion carries, thank you.
All right.
Item number 16, this is on the award of solicitation number 2022-001RFP AMV, Town of Horizon City Emergency Ambulance Services to Elite Medical Transport of Texas LLC for a three-year term in the amount of $530,094, and that the mayor be authorized to sign the contract and any other documents related to the award.
Mayor, city council, recently, we don't, at, at this point, we don't have a contract with an ambulance service, but we have been using Elite. We did put out to bid an RFP for, for services, and we only had two takers. We had Elite Medical Transport, and we had City Ambulance Service based out of Houston. There is a big difference in the cost. There's a breakdown there. There's a difference of $101,000 for a month, and a difference of $1,215,000 for a year, and a difference of $3,645,000 for the three years. So Elite is the best qualified candidate for the contract.
They have been doing a, a great job, but I've heard of some constituents here in Horizon. Chief, have you had any problems with them here since we've been here?
Not, not that I know of. I didn't really deal with them initially, but they had a situation, and I'll give an example. Had a situation today where one of their ambulances got struck, got T-boned by another vehicle. I can't tell you if it happened in Horizon, but it was the ambulance that occupies Horizon. They were down for 30 minutes, and then they were back up again.
Right.
So they provide really good service. If they don't have an ambulance for us, they'll take the one in Sapporo, they have one that's floating.
Yeah, well, we have that name on, sorry.
Yeah, right. I already spoke to them.
We have one, one ambulance here in Horizon.
There is no, 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 well, there's one in Horizon, there's one in Sapporo, and there's a float. And I believe this new contract allows them to do service between hospitals, which they didn't do before. So that ambulance, if we need them, will stop doing the, the transports and service us. They make big money on that transportation.
This contract is just, is it a year?
It's for three years.
Three years, okay.
It's three years?
Three years, and I think that it might have even expired early February.
February, February 1st.
This other ambulance service, it costs a lot. They do service Houston, San Antonio, San Marcos, Midland, Odessa, but I really don't know how they would have been able to, I mean, with the, the, what they're charging us is, it's insane.
It was a version of Germany. They don't.
Is a motion approved, second, and a second?
Do you have a question? Did we ever get reimbursed for services? By the original contracts? With, no, with Elite. For example, if they say an insurance company pays Elite, do we get some of that money back?
No.
No, their rate tells was based on the fact that they would be.
We're a bird.
Five, five though. And they got.
See, they have a, they have an eight-minute response time. If they don't, they, I, this is something I didn't know, because it's new to me as far as addressing this. But every month, they submit a report to the city. So whether they're, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, or they're explaining why they didn't.
Where before we didn't have.
Yes.
Thank you, chief. There's a motion approved, and a second? Call, call the council.
Mayor?
Aye.
Franchi?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 17, this is also discussion motion that the mayor be authorized to sign the order form for five-year subscription with Comsec Reuters doing business as West Publishing Corporation for the clear Proplex software program for the police department using Texas Department of Information Resources Contract Number DIRLGLGLCALIR-02. And the annual fee for the first year will be $3,912, and the annual fee will increase 3% per year for years two through five.
Mayor, city council, this service is needed for our detectives to do background checks on some of the criminal cases that they handle. This is the only type of service that's out there. I don't know any other company that provides the same type of information. I don't know any other company that provides the same type of information that these investigators would be getting from this company. Um, it did, it did go up a little bit, but not by much. And yes, it's three percent every year, but it's a, a needed software for our, oh, excuse me, our investigators to utilize.
Motion to approve.
So a motion to approve and a second?
We asked for another twenty, ten, twenty-two percent a day.
Now, say, hold the council, I would... Hold the council, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Quiros?
Aye.
Renteria?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Padilla?
Aye.
Cora?
Aye.
Now, real quick, I do enjoy that project that's coming up. I actually live on the other side of John Hayes. So this is perfect. I leave before I retire. Hopefully it'll be done.
Thank you.
I was already drafting one.
I don't know.
Item number eighteen. Discussion action. This is on a resolution that the mayor be authorized to sign two-year service orders, uh, numbers one five five zero two dash Q dash zero four, six five five, and two two, two seven seven, uh, dash Q dash one two seven one nine, and related documents for thirty-six-month terms with Conterra Ultra Broadband LLC doing business as Conterra Networks for internet and telephone services using Region nineteen ASC, Allied State Cooperative Contract Number twenty-two dash seven four two nine for the total cost of eighty-two thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
Could you repeat those service orders?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pat Ranleal, Finance Director. Uh, this is a three-year contract for, uh, internet and, um, telephone service. Uh, currently, we have AT&T providing us this service, and, um, it was, our contract with them is up. And, uh, Chief and I decided to look, to see if there were other providers. And of course, uh, Conterra came up. Both providers are under Region nineteen contracts, so the, the, you know, the prices are pretty much set and pretty much, um, uh, been discussed, and they're the most available and the most economical. Conterra already has us hooked up to, um, with their fiber coming into this building because of dispatch. And so that made it a little bit more, um, uh, a little bit more, um, appro, uh, what's the word?
Economical.
Not so much economical, but reasonable, because we were already connected. And, um, over the past years, uh, we have not really had, uh, any trouble with AT&T as far as service is concerned, but they have terrible customer service. I spent a year and a half trying to get a dispute settled, a year and a half, okay? And each time, I had to talk to somebody different. Uh, I was talking to somebody either in Florida or California or whatever it was. But anyway, it took a year and a half to get something settled. And, uh, with no apologies, no, um, um, you know, no considerations at all. But anyway, so, uh, I was not gonna go through that again. And, and I would not want my successor to have to go through anything like that again. So, uh, one of the, one of the driving forces for, as far as my selection of who, who the vendor was, was to have the availability of somebody to deal with. Um, but on top of all of that, Conterra did come in, uh, um, less expensive. Uh, again, we already have a fiber, and, uh, it's just a matter of switching us over to, to a new service.
The moral being, don't make Pat proud.
Second. Motion approved and a second? Hold the council, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Quiros?
Aye.
Renteria?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Padilla?
Aye.
Cora?
Aye.
And the motion carries.
Item number nineteen. Discussion action. This is recording a resolution approving the fiscal year twenty-two EDC budget amendment number one.
Uh, again, Mayor and Council, Pat Ranleal, Finance Director. Uh, you are required to approve, uh, the EDC budget annually, so therefore, you're required to approve any, um, amendment to it. Uh, when the EDC's budget was, uh, developed back in, um, June, July, when we normally do budgets, uh, we were without a permanent director, and so, uh, we were without a vision. So, uh, with him coming in, it determined that there was a need for an additional, uh, uh, expertise. And so, um, we needed to, um, adjust the budget for that particular person, which was hired in November. So basically, it's a, it's a ten-month adjust, um, ten, ten and a half month adjustment for salary and benefits.
Motion approved. Second. There's a motion approved and a second. And I do wanna say about the EDC, the, the job that they're doing, I, I really appreciate it. Really, they're making things happen. Appreciate that. Great work. Hold the council. Hold the council, please.
Aye.
Quiros?
Aye.
Renteria?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Padilla?
Aye.
Cora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Seeing no further items on the agenda, I'll, I'll pay a motion to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for taking the...
Can you send the, the, send Garcia's? Go on, Garcia's.
It's part of transition. Time when we would apply for the raise grant. So what would you do with the planning department? With, who say? So, so, uh, would you like to have people at the office? So that the commissioner knows? Yes. Yeah. Because I don't have to go through the county attorney's office. Yes, yes. Senator, you can send me, and I can forward it to Commissioner. Very good. Yeah, including in there as well, certainly. Wanting to do it. And I told you, we're gonna tell the commissioner. That we're doing this, so, I mean, we have a very good relationship with him. We get some respect for us too, where we want to. Absolutely, yes.
So did they use?
Yes, Senator, you know, for the, the commissioner.
Yeah, see, we can get him to the side of us. Oh, Garcia right here. Did he fund it?
Well, maybe I'm telling them.
Yeah, so that would be the best thing. See, if you want to go on or look at some... John Hayes is funded, right? John Hayes is funded.
No, but we're involved with Betty Gano, I understand. Okay. Is it designs here?
When are you gonna start doing that?
Yeah, the two faces are actually... Yeah, it should be bases. I know. Yeah, except the base one, the lean, the meat, and that's like two things.
Oh, yeah.
Chief?
However, that doesn't go on. When I, uh, first, uh, I'm not a dealer here.
I've been here forever. High flies. If you go down John Hayes, here with Mayor Thompson, that was high school. You're going to have a special year.
Uh, you're special.
And that's how it goes to John Hayes. Good night, good night.
And then they're friends to another six and a half. They said that they recovered these.
Take care. Yeah, absolutely.
It's the, uh...
Thank you.
Yeah, we, uh, I've been, the development, they put it up to natural gas. And now I'm working, using sanitary sewer since, uh... They're joining, uh, the, 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 the sanitary sewer.
Oh, okay, that one down in...
Yes, so, uh...
So we can drink a lot.
Good night. Oh, that one.
Yes, yeah, we were, we have, yeah, we have two septic systems there. We've been in septic system since eight five. And it would happen right there. It's, it's, it's right there, and it's a developer. And then also, they were gonna connect this to the, uh, treatment plant. But of course, the, uh, it was gonna be physically compatible. So in the end, there was a lawsuit that lasted about fifteen years and, uh...
I could have been just for that.
So we were in septic system for that time.
Yeah, so, yeah, because then now we have all that other development.
Yes, hopefully with it, hopefully it will be within, uh, two or three months or a week of it. And, uh, probably decommissioned a little too soon. And that, that piece is gonna be...
I was just looking at someone who was like...
Oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, but you can cancel. The Mexican, the, the...
Why? Why do you stand there?
Are you understanding?
No, no, no.
But you said you worked it. Because I remember when, I remember when I started.
Yes, nothing. Yes, I remember having to, uh, get back to my office, go to Arkansas, and there was no energy change.
All right. We'll see you guys. Take care.
What's, what's up with you guys? Your guys?
Uh, my guys?
Corrector.
Oh, Corrector, well...
Did you see what it's talking?
Yeah, and the thugs. No, what happened is that one of the security guards left it open, unlocked the gate to allow families through, but he didn't lock it, so, uh, the thugs, the aficionados, uh, took advantage and they, they had a party there. But I know there were reports of like twenty-two deaths, but, uh, it was just a lot of people. Uh, I know, I know, uh, I'm trying to do the right thing. But it's, what I'm thinking is, is they're gonna, remember the station is that? Yes, I remember for the, for the whole, uh, for the whole Sunday. Okay, so see you.